Call to the Committee of Whole Meeting for August first, 2023 at 6:31 PM. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is like. Yes, it's for item 9.3, the staff report 2023 dot zero eight dot zero one dot zero three regarding Dale Wright's affordable housing concept. The reason being is that my property is adjacent to his property and it could, depending on what council decides, it could either raise or lower the price or the value of my home. So I'm just going to stay out of the discussion and any voting to do with that.
Okay, three deputations, delegations, 3.1 David Bridges, Dr. Drummond Memorial Park update and restoration of town murals. David?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. William Henry Drummond was a world famous poet who came to Cobalt in 1905 to become the town's first doctor and to supervise his family mining property, Drummond Mine. And Dr. Drummond's fireplace was relocated from Curlake in 1988 inside the Paul Pena Library, Cobalt Library. Over the years, the fireplace needed repairs, the retaining wall had crumbled. The information chaos was outdated, it wasn't bilingual, the text and photos had faded, and the garden was very overgrown. So after Drummond was inducted into the Order of the North in 2019, our plans were made to revitalize the Drummond fireplace area and an empty lot the town owned above the fireplace to restore and beautify this historic landmark needing downtown revitalization. Then the pandemic came, and as we all know, normalcy ended. Many of us were housebound, businesses closed or reduced staff, supply chains were disrupted and contractors, particularly carpenters, were difficult to find. So I ordered two lilac trees in the spring and they came in the fall. A contractor visited the project, was interested in helping out. I emailed and phoned them with no answer for several months. When I did contract someone, I kept asking for deadline changes as they had a backlog of jobs, especially after the pandemic was over. So there was quite a few challenges in terms of that, and I know that the town probably, the town had some issues with those things too, with contractors. Then this year, we had a final fundraiser and it was challenging with, of course, tight money, inflation and much uncertainty. The future may not get any better. So, but people gave donations and in-kind services, so it was almost finished the project. Still to come is a donated black hole installation and two historic metal panels from Joe Doop who will need installation. I want to thank the town for funding a contractor to fix the fireplace with a new membrane on its roof. And they cleaned up the retaining wall and then also they built the wheelchair friendly sidewalk. Numbers wise, we planted 37 cedars, four lilacs, one maple tree, eight glacial boulders removed from three locations to create a glacial boulder rock garden. I donated a cedar shingle bench, two historical artifacts, the Horstrock Fountain, rescued from decades of obscurity from behind the public works garage, and a jackhammer drill donated by Gino Chideroni are in the park. And Ontario Heritage Trust plaque was relocated for better viewing. And the Ontario, I contacted Ontario Heritage Trust, and they have a student who comes around to repaint and, you know, restore some of the plaques. There's 1,300 of them in Ontario, and unfortunately, the student had already made their route out. We're hoping to have them come next year because it hasn't been repainted for a hundred years. So also a a cedar shingle information kiosk has a bilingual sign with updated information on Drummond's life and replaces the less visible, a 20-foot also aluminum, a street sign was installed to replace the less visible wooden Drummond care and sign. Over the four years, many volunteers came forth to help my brother Dwight and I, who was my right hand and left hand man. I want to acknowledge the volunteers and sponsors who generously gave to make this project successful. My brother Connie Corville, Chuck Remisky, Armin Leonard, Cobalt Coleman's Line Club Youth Volunteers, Joyce Littelier, Kendra LaCarte, Robin Gardner, Graham Gamble, Joey Winks, Jim Starchuck. Jim's been cutting the grass and attempted to build a flower garden, but the vandals got at it.
Oh, yeah.
And Bob St. Jean built a little free library that was supposed to be in the Drummond Park area, but we consulted Kendra and she felt that it should be closer to the library, so we relocated it there. And the sponsors, myself, Diane St. Jean and her family, Marvin Morrison, Gary Moody, Gino Chideroni, Connie Corville, Jan Wood, Shirley Gilson, Kathy Fisher, LJ Caparuso. LJ Caparuso is from Toronto, I never met her. She emailed me and she thought it was a great idea to do this park. And she said, email me back, you know, if you need some help. So I emailed her back a couple of months later, asked her for a donation, and she sent me 20 bucks in an envelope. And the beauty of that was there were donors in this community that had resources to donate and they didn't. And a woman who had limited means and said, you know, here's a $20 donation. And she got it, she cared, and that $20 meant, meant, meant almost like $2,000 to me in a way. So I really appreciated the large and the small donations. Susan McCaslin, a friend of mine from B C, and RB Sand and Paint. Robert Penton lives outside Nollisker, and I asked him for a quote on the Horstrock Fountain to sandblast and repaint. And he said, every year I do two or three events in the community for free, and he did it. I had a previous quote the year before, $500, and we got it up there. He did the work and just fantastic. And then we, Gino Chideroni donated a jackhammer and we brought that up there, Joe Doop brought it up there and he sandblasted and repainted that too. It's really, really nice. Spring Post Poetry Festival, AB Digital Printing, Profile Plus Metal Works Arts, that's Joe Doop's company. Cobalt Sword Society, the Mississauga Foundation gave two grants, and Town of Cobalt, Miller, the Miller Group and Pedersen Construction. The project came to under 20,000 with no direct funding from any provincial or federal government agency. We had our opening ceremony during the Spring Post Poetry Festival on June 24th, and I want to thank Mayor Edset and Councilman Anderson for being in attendance. And this is Canada's newest memorial poetry park to our country's first national and international poet of fame. It's a literary landmark the town should be very proud of. I have literary friends who come from across Canada for visits, and they are surprised and amazed that Cobalt has not one, but two memorial poetry parks. A few potential additions when funding is secure is a standalone mural on the side of the library wall from Dean Dubois. And also I've been in touch with Hookmark Canada, they put literary plaques across the country to authors and poets. And there are not many in Northern Ontario, I think there's one in Sudbury, and they're enthusiastic about potentially having a plaque to Dr. Drummond. Unfortunately, they don't have any funding, you have to, you have to self-fund it, and the plaques aren't that cheap. But I'm looking down the road, hopefully will be approved, they approve two or three projects a year. Yeah.
It's looking very nice there down there, dude.
Oh, thank you. And my next presentation is about the Cobalt Murals research that I've been doing. I noticed the June 20th council meeting under beautification, murals, investigate auctions for repair and interest groups, clean up visual enhancement, some could be done by volunteers to re-involve it. And three, encourage residents to submit their concerns, ideas to this block. Have any ideas been submitted, Steve?
Not at this time.
Not, okay. If so, I'd like to offer this presentation. I became aware several years ago of the Global Mural Alliance, which is now the Global Mural Association. And I became a member via the Spring Post Poetry Festival. I was interested in hosting someday their every two-year conference. The last one was planned for China, but due to COVID, of course, was canceled. And I called and talked to the president, Serge Mallonford, who lives in Sherbrooke, Quebec. And he indicated they're rethinking their international conferences, it's quite expensive, of course, with travel and a lot of other uncertainties. And he's trying to keep the conference more local. I outlined the murals in Cobalt and other amenities, and he was enthusiastic that the town could potentially host this mural fest. He said they prefer not to be just a mural festival, but include other cultural and historical aspects of the community to engage, educate and entertain the delegates worldwide. They usually get up to 150 from around the world, so it's a nicely small scale conference. Serge is quite knowledgeable about mural restoration, and it would be a good idea to contact him as the town progresses in their mural restoration plans. And I have a pile of contacts that I'll give you, Stephen. So I made a list of the local mural contacts. The ones I have right now are Dean Dubois, mural artist, and Mick Michelle, who did the mural on the wall of the Whiskey Deck Beer Company. And I've listed the Cobalt Outdoor Murals, the Firefathers Museum Wall, Kenny Fuller did that. Cobalt Train Station Murals were done by Kenny Fuller and Roland Russell. The OPP mural on the former Egg and Eagle Office, Dean Dubois did that mural. The Fraser Hotel Steps area, there's a small mural there, Laura Landers, Melissa Monk did that. The Legion Branch 54 Wall mural, Roland Russell, that one. Cobalt Mining Museum has black and white standing murals between the museum and the liquor store with the jackhammer there. They have, I think, three of them. Dean Dubois did those. Then across the street is the Rock Sculpture Murals near the Cobalt Historical Society office. Rob Meyer and Sally Lawrence did those, and I think they're coming back in August. They've got some ideas. I think they've got some ideas for the granite mural that's inside the Classic Theatre of repositioning it outside somewhere as a, as a rock sculpture mural. Also, I'm writing a letter to the Mining Museum Board to see if they can display two indoor murals that Dean Dubois did that were in the train station, and they were moved to the museum. And they're quite big, I just talked to Peter at the museum and they're quite big, they can't display them, but they're looking for a home. So I'm going to contact them and see if, you know, we might be able to place them somewhere in town, indoors. And of course, behind us, there's a Cobalt Community Hall mural. That's an indoor mural. And also there's another standalone mural above the town office, I think Ruth Bernash did that, I'm not quite sure, but Laura Landers said Ruth Bernash may have done that. And the Silver Nugget Store has a mural, it's a standalone mural. So indoor murals, of course, there's a new mural at the Paul Pena Library, Jennifer Ferrera did that with some help from other artists. Gary has a mural, fantastic mural, and Roland Russell did that one, Cafe. And the Classic Theatre has an amazing mural by Maureen Stewart, she spent the whole summer. She had five doors that she put together and did a fantastic mural of Cobalt. It's in the back room of the Classic Theatre. And potential murals, I contacted Connie Boyd from the Silver Box, and she has a white stucco wall that would make a fantastic mural. And I've given her the contact of the First Nations artist, Mick Michelle, I think she's from the First Nations. She's had murals all over Canada, really amazing. And I've talked to Matthew Johnson at Poor Boys Souls, he's planning on putting a mural on the side of his house. It would be a mural first to the cobblers who, Matthew said about 11 of them were here at the, at the time of the silver boom. And second one would be to Mr. Brosko, who, some of us know. He was a well-known shoemaker in Cobalt. His home was right across from the CIDC Bank, we've got that house right on the corner there, just before the, on the same side as the Golden Age. That was his, his home and his repair shop, just like Matthew's actually doing with his. And the, there is a gray wall on the side of the library behind the Dr. Drummond Memorial Park. A couple of years ago, I contacted the previous library board to see if Dean Dubois was interested in putting a mural there. And they, they weren't receptive because they didn't want anything attached to the wall. And Dean is quite comfortable with that, and I'm comfortable with that, where he would build a standalone mural. Build a little frame for it, and Dean uses aluminum panels. He buys the aluminum panels at Northern Science, four by eight aluminum panels, and he takes them to a shop and paints them, and then he brings them and installs them. So and the Classic Theatre has some incredible mural space where those large windows are, you know, the side of the building that potentially could have murals indoors, but, you know, very visible for the public, the street public. So Cobalt has extensive real estate potential for murals on building walls, concrete walls, display windows and rock cuts. So, yeah, so let's keep the momentum going. We have tremendous potential, like I say, Serge was quite enthusiastic that potentially this mural festival could come to Cobalt. We just have to sort of find a way to fix up some of our murals. Now, this is a little controversial, Dean thinks you're throwing money away if you repaint those murals on the concrete walls, the brick walls, they're just not it's not made, you know, for them to last. But I talked to Serge and he says there is a way. I don't know how, but, you know, I don't know all the technical issues, but it'd be a good idea if you're proceeding, you want to restore some of these murals. So you talk to him and see what you, how you could go about doing it. What else? Because at the present state they're in, they signify neglect and a lack of, 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 you know, restoration over the years. The town has not invested, whatever previous council or councils has not invested enough money to upgrade them. And now when everyone comes to town, they see the deterioration of those murals, and it sends a message. This town doesn't care about the murals, or they would have invested money in them years ago. So there's a negative connotation, I mean, those murals are nice, but there's a negative connotation of the condition the murals are in right now. Especially about down the train station, the train station, that's a joke, those, those murals down there are just almost non-existent. So, so I'm, you know, I'm really hopeful the town, you know, keeps pursuing this. And I'm certainly, you know, on my own, encouraging the local business to, you know, to put up some murals. And if we can find any funding or anything like that, that'd be fantastic, you know, either restore some of them or really paint them over because they are a nice, they're massive ice, they're not beautiful at all. And I would always say.
You're always out of time here, David, we're sorry to cut you short.
He did say, he did say 10 minutes.
Absolutely, I'll send you the digital version of that.
Okay.
So there are lots of contacts there if you want to pursue it.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
Thanks for caring.
Yeah, item four, adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting dated August 1st, 2023. As presented. We were in a second here, Councilor Cooper, Councilor Starchuck, any discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Five, staff reports, 5.1 Public Works. Any questions, concerns you want to forward, Stephen? Well, I guess.
Yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way, like the sewer backup with people flushing inappropriate things in town is a multi-year problem. I'm wondering if maybe we could use one of these as a if we could somehow modify how much it costs and advertise that, you know, this one plug cost us X amount to resolve. It costs all taxpayers money, like to educate people on what it's costing us to flush things that aren't toilet paper down the toilet. Maybe that will speak to some people, I'm not sure, but we need to reach people, could we put posters up at the post office? Because if we mail out with tax bills, it doesn't get to tenants, but they do get, have mailboxes. Maybe we can do more of an outreach campaign to really emphasize how much it's costing.
We can definitely look into that, there's a cost for mailing out too.
Well, no, poster, that's why I say, by the way, in the tax bill that's already being mailed out, it's not going to get to everyone, but a poster will.
All their sites. Announcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put something up on our Facebook as well. And put the amount each time it's cost.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe like, you know, we know every so many thousand dollars, that's another 1% tax hike. So maybe the dollar amount and the percentage tax hike amount to pay for that. Maybe, I know, I know it's a problem.
I don't know if it's possible to post a picture, like, don't flush this. This was found, this teddy bear, like, and this isn't a teddy bear, but this was found, don't do it.
You could ask a plumber to come and explain it.
Yeah.
You know, it's true.
Hang those racks up on the street corner near where they were pulled out.
It could have been a kid though flushing that one.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
Do we have something weird going on the frame lately?
Yeah, where the last, it was a bunch of
A bunch of rags.
Really?
It shouldn't even be flushing. Clean it, because it doesn't, it doesn't break up like toilet paper does.
And like baby wipes say they're flushable, but they're not, and we've had problems with
I feel everybody says that's the worst thing, it's great for him, making the money, but he says it's the worst thing for the sewers, his wipes. Cobalt should buy everyone.
5.2, any other discussion? Sorry. Sorry.
Not on the report, is that leak, it's over on Miller Avenue Baker? Been there for both four weeks now.
Right now with manpower and we're trying to keep costs down at this time. So Public Works has been monitoring the rate at this time, and if it gets worse, then we will have to bring in an outside contractor. We just don't have the manpower at this time until through the holidays.
That I find unsettling because whenever there's been a water leak, it has always been jumped on virtually immediately. There are health reasons, there are underground things that can happen with water moving silks away and create a great deal of problems down the road. As Perry asked the question about how much water was flowing out, and we sell the stuff around a dollar a liter, that was about 400 cubic meters a day. That's about 11,000 bucks. So we could probably
Well, but we have to respect that our staff has also booked their holidays too.
Well, yes, but it's also, you know, there can be a health hazard in there under some circumstances. I know the going philosophy is always if it's under pressure, it's not, doesn't represent a problem. And that may be true, but if you have a fire or anything else, you could get negative pressure, and then something could enter the system. There are reasons that these things get treated quickly.
We have another, a further discussion with the Public Works supervisors.
At this time, they were monitoring over the last few weeks, they ran into an issue late last year with another one, they were trying to figure out exactly what the issue was, it took some time, and then we ended up using a third party to fix it, and it cost the town quite a bit of money at that time. So that's what we're just trying to offset, knowing budgetary costs at this time as well.
Anything further? Do you want to bring some information back to council? 5.2 Cobalt Public Library.
Nothing there, I give my update there, last time, we do have a meeting upcoming. So I'll have some next time.
Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the staff reports as presented, mover in a second here. Councilor Anderson, Councilor Hughes. Any other discussion on those matters? Okay, all in favor? Items for council consideration, 6.1 Maggie Wilson, the Heritage and Cultural Trails Project.
I think all of you received the email from the the Historical Society there. They, they do such a fantastic job there in the Heritage Silver Trail, updating things, keeping, keeping maps, printing out new maps, new guides, all the rest of it. And, but in town, we have a lot of different trails. An artwork, one, seven, you know, seven pieces of artwork from the group of seven. We've got signs here and there of various historical things, and none of it's ever advertised or looked after. It's been put up by various groups with the idea like, we want to do this, we want to do that, but no one looks after upkeep, or no one checks to make sure it's historically right. And Historical Society knows of two or three signs that really need their history changed. What they're asking us is if council will officially let them take over monitoring and looking after the various tourism aspects of this signage in town. And that way then they can, as they're doing their pamphlets, they can include them on their overall maps of places for the tourists to stop and look at. They're very good about putting out guidebooks to explain everything. And I guess so they want our permission to sort of take over responsibility for doing this, since no one's had the responsibility. And also just to ascertain that their insurance covers people out in the Heritage Silver Trail. So to confirm that the town insurance policy will cover any of sort of the tourists walking around any of these sites of anything should happen. The one, all the ones that are in towns, they just want confirmation that, you know, what they do here in town will also be covered by insurance. So there in the Kibo Walking Trail, it's duplicated in the Heritage Silver Trail and the Cobalt Walking Tour, both take in Kibo Walking Trails. So they will probably change it, crediting tech, so the Kibo Walking Trail on their maps. And not have people looking for, well, I was looking for this trail, but it's got this sign on it. And that kind of thing, so they're looking to cover, you know, to redo discrepancy stuff like this. And they have been And they have been excellent at looking after things for the last, oh, the majority of this group, the last 15, 20 years anyway, they made major proposals. And then, just an update, I'm surprised Dave hadn't mentioned this. Cobalt Historical Society contributed to a book called Cobalt, the Mining Town and the Canadian Imagination by artist historian Catherine Mastin. And this is through the MacMichael exhibit down south. And so they have asked now for the Historical Society to send them the high resolution images to go in this book. So this will, this book will be another way in which Cobalt is glorified, advertised, and and in exchange, as well, the MacMichael Collection is paying for, for doing all that. And all they've asked is that they send us two of the books, so we've got them for our library. So I've been hearing about this project for a number of years, so I'm glad it's moving to the state where they, they're going to be actually getting into publications now. So that was just an FYI. I was very excited when I see. Anything else on that one? Okay, Karen Labonte. Seven point one, Karen, items for the same heading, items for council information, seven point one, Karen Labonte, thank you letter contribution towards the ESCSM academic awards, the letter was included in your package thanking us for our support. Seven point two, OPPE detachment board framework proposal approval, they're still waiting for confirmation on that. This is what they put in for approval. And requirements of all committees, including ad hoc committees, section six point four one, seven point seven and seven point eight is a procedural bylaw in section two point, or two, three, eight of the municipal act. Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council consideration information as presented, need a mover in a second here. Councillor Cooper and councillor Starcheck, and discussion? I'll start us off, for the procedural bylaw on ad hoc committees, we have confirmation from E4M. Because right now we're not following our procedures. We need to have an agenda for the committees, minutes have to be brought back, the agenda has to be posted, because those meetings are supposed to be open to the public and for transparency, and so we need to make sure that we're following those rules. So the existing ad hoc committees, if you can work with the staff to get your agendas and when you're having meetings, and also to indicate who the chairman of your ad hoc committees are. And if in doubt, look back on the procedural bylaw to make sure we're doing it right. Before we get our hands up. Any other discussion? Also, Will Cox?
Just confused a little bit, looking at Peggy Young's note to us. She says that a local board names municipal service board, transportation commission, public library board, board of public services board, planning board, or any other board, commission, committee, body, or of local authority established or exercising any power under the act with respect to the affairs of regimes of one or more municipalities, excluding school board and a concentration authority. And yet, then she says, in the act, section two thirty eight and two thirty nine to two thirty nine point two, local board does not include police services boards or public library boards. So how could she say it does in one, when the act says it specifically doesn't in the second?
This actually comes from the act, both parts. That's what it says in the act. Work hand doesn't know what the linchance. It's government, you go to your municipal act.
Yes.
That's exactly how it's phrased in the municipal act, both paragraphs.
You're talking about two thirty eight and two thirty nine, two?
Yep.
Yes, I, oh, yes, absolutely.
But the definitions of the act above.
Yes.
Is also in the municipal act.
I've never seen it mentioning the public library board. I will, can you give me the chapter and verse on where that is in the municipal act? I have not seen it, so.
I will go back and I will look.
Thank you, that would be very kind, because I'm more than a little confused by that.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? No. Okay, so all in favor? Carrie? Eight, unfinished business, eight point one, ad hoc committee procedural bylaw, councillors Cooper and Will Cox.
Waiting on staff to come back from holidays.
Eight point two, ad hoc committee Sharp Lake property, councillors Cooper, Hunter and Hughes.
Got to put George on that as well.
George Othmar, yes.
Yeah, we're waiting for our first meeting.
And is the mayor supposed to appoint the head?
Nope, we have to do it. We have to have a first meeting.
Our procedural bylaw and committee rules contradicts the ad hoc procedural bylaw rules. One says, committee says that the mayor is supposed to appoint, and under the ad hoc, it says the committee is supposed to appoint. But ad hocs are committees, so I've asked for clarification on how other municipalities do it, and normally the ad hoc committee designates their chair, decides their chair.
Don't we also need a sunset provision, like a date at which it, do we appoint a date, like, how much time we have to achieve our goal?
We didn't for the Sharp Lake, and I don't know about procedural, the purchase.
So at the next meeting for the agendas, what we'll do is have that meeting set at end date, at the first meeting, so we know everyone's on the same timeline.
Yeah, and if more time's required, it can always come back to be.
But it sets a deadline.
Yeah, this deadline is usually decided by council. We're going to have to deal with it.
And nine, I'm sorry, did I go through the other one? No, eight point three, ad hoc committee purchasing policy, councillors Cooper, Anderson and Will Cox.
Wait for our first meeting.
Things slow down during the summer. And when you decide your first meeting date, you'll let the staff know so it can be posted.
Absolutely, because they have to do the agenda.
Nine, new business, nine point one, draft bylaw, 2023 accessibility policy staff report. Yep.
The AODA, the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, ministry contacted me, we were audited. And during the audit, has to be updated every five years, the last time it was updated was 2014, so we are not in compliance. Therefore, we've done up a new bylaw, but through, so it'll be good until twenty 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 seven, or twenty eight. So. So this is, just makes us in compliance, we have to be in compliance by the end of this.
You know, they knew it's exciting, different from the old one?
Actually, it updated some of the items that the municipality has worked on since 2014. And here it just stated a few other items, that the accessibility chairlift was installed, mentioned here in 2008, but 2020, the installation of automatic doors at municipal office, medical center and the public library, and it just mentions that right here in the bylaw, so.
Nine.
Is a direction then to bring for first, second and third reading at the regular meeting.
That would be cool too.
That'll be done by the end of Hock. And nine point two, staff report, 2023, oh eight, one, oh two. Point zero two, hiring policy. Want to speak to us?
This is a decision of council, how move forward with the hiring policy, and then it's used, stating, and it shows within it what our current hiring policy from 2017, zero, zero, nine bylaw have. And in contact, E4M, you have the slideshow, and as per procedural bylaw, I just want to know how staff or council would like to proceed with it, if they were looking at doing an amendment? Or if, how council just wants to proceed with the other party?
I can always start it off, I believe because of the roles of council and the role of staff, council's involved in the hiring of the town manager. But the day-to-day operations, it's the town manager that's in charge of that. So I think it should be up to the town manager to designate who's going to sit on the hiring committee. When it comes to the CAO, it should be council that decides who's going to sit on that. Or the town manager, so we're using old language. That's my thoughts on it anyway.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we have to stand in for hiring public work guys or anyone really. Unless it was a CAO or a town manager.
Yeah.
There's no supersede that guy, right?
Yeah, stated there, E4M's slideshow, council as a whole hires my position.
Yeah.
And the CAO hires their employees.
Yeah, we don't need more things to do, more.
I'd like to see one councillor actually sit on that.
Right.
It's a transparency and accountability thing, right?
And speaking to that, I think it should be the town manager who decides what councillor is going to sit on that.
Probably a good idea.
I'd like to see council appoint.
Again, council's getting involved in the day-to-day running.
It's just, it's a committee, it's a committee, right?
Yeah, well, your town manager knows the councillors and knows who's best suited to sit in that chair as well. Because it also comes back to council anyway, and a report from the town manager on who the successful applicant is.
With respect, I'm more in favor of Harry's thought than your thought. Chiefly because, and I think Harry nailed it, with the transparency. And the role of stewardship, too often, we're looking at roles and defining roles and narrowing down roles. And that's fine, but we are also, as the council, responsible for stewardship of what's going on in the town. And in my history with councils in Cobalt and, and other councils, we have always used a chairman system for all of the different kinds of things that the town does. We've always, or used to always have a councillor on Public Works, one on finance, one on recreation, one for the fire department. Council was busy and involved getting a picture of what's happening in the town. And those representatives could come back to us and we could ask specific individuals what they were hearing. And I think that is a very important aspect of delivering proper stewardship in the town. And I think every time we limit or decrease our involvement in the stewardship aspect of it, we decrease our effectiveness. Certainly, in the wonderful world of commerce, the people who are hired to run the companies run the hiring function. And that's a given, and generally boards of direction are not directly involved. But councils are a bit of a different beast, and small town councils are a bit of a different beast. And I, I think it's just so much better for us if we stay involved and get more involved. Just from a point of view of transparency and being able to report back and provide perspective.
Councillor Hunter?
So I think we're all in agreement that there should be a councillor in attendance, that's sort of what I'm hearing, it's just how that councillor is going to be chosen. And depending on the position being hired, because we're talking on a larger scale, like, not this particular position, but on a larger scale. Each councillor has different skills that might be more appropriate depending on the situation. I think it would definitely be appropriate for the manager to at least request or recommend that they would like to work with one person. And if the manager and council are already on good terms and working together, we should be considering the same person or one of two people anyways, like, I just don't see why there needs to be a conflict there, and there really shouldn't. So if the manager is recommending somebody, and unless we have a really good reason not to take the recommendation, I think we should go with that.
Councillor Hughes?
I was just going to say that we have a couple of ad hoc committees that haven't had their first meetings yet, so we got a lot of things on our plate that we don't need to tie ourselves down with hiring somebody for Public Works or for somebody in the office or whatever might come up next.
Okay, and I'll address councillor Will Cox's comments. If everybody remembers the Fred Dean report that came out, that's what happens when council gets a little too involved. And because then people take it a little bit far. And that's why we have to make sure that, well, yes, stewardship is a wonderful idea, that we don't get ourselves into a spot where we're considered interfering with the process of the day-to-day running of the town. Council's role is to set policy and procedure, not to be involved in the day-to-day run. Bottom line, whether we're a small council, a big council, a city council, the rules are the same, it's the municipal act that governs that. We don't have a choice. Councillor Will Cox?
Two points, quite quickly, I think in all matters where council's involved, council should be the deciding party. Recommendations, fine, but I think it's still a council responsibility to appoint members to any committees. And secondly, I find it difficult to accept the notion that people are going to be irresponsible, and therefore they shouldn't be permitted to take on roles like stewardship. There, very definitely, there is a clear line between interfering in the business of the town or observing the business of the town. They're two very different worlds, stewardship is observing and reporting back to council. Interference is my telling somebody that they can't do that, or they should do something else, or that, that should never be a councillor's position doing that, never, ever. But I don't think, because some councillors in the past may have done that kind of thing, and I can think of a few, that doesn't mean that councillors necessarily will always do that, and it certainly shouldn't mean that councillors can't do one role responsibly.
Okay, but I'm just looking at what the municipal act says, what our role is, bottom line, what our role is.
One of those roles is stewardship.
It may be stewardship, yes, but it doesn't mean that we need to we need to trust in the staff that we have in place, we don't need to sit on them, we don't need to micromanage them. We need to trust that they can do their job, they're professionals. And that's what the municipal act tries to set out, so that we're not micromanaging, we're not interfering. Sometimes even having a voice is, can be considered an interference.
Don't think I said a speaking, I said observing.
You may have said observing, but like you said, you know, a couple of instances where that has, has not been the case. And how do you, how do you make sure it's not going to happen, other than you follow a rule and you stick to the rule? And that's why we have the municipal act. That's what our rules are, it's not up to us to agree or disagree with them, it's up to us to follow them. If we want to change them, then you're going to have to go to the municipal level or the provincial level to change the act.
No, I think that's an interpretation of the act, and I disagree with it.
Again, everybody's entitled to their opinion. But this still doesn't take us any closer to what council's decision is. Our hiring policy is pretty vague, the one in existence. The staff report set out the options.
Are we supposed to be making this decision tonight or will that be made at the next meeting? Like, are you asking for a motion?
Well, I'm asking for direction for staff because if they're, if they want to amend this by law, it's going to cause a delay in hiring.
Does staff have? A recommendation for a counselor to be?
Honestly, your worship. I would state for the hiring. The public works, what I would recommend is allow town manager and the department head to do hiring process.
Without a counselor.
Without a counselor. I could understand, like I said, for the C A O position, council decision, hundred percent. Even maybe one for that department head. But going down the hierarchy chart. Put faith into the C A O, town manager and the department head for.
I see it like there's no, it's like almost like no difference. Let's say I had to do on the hiring with you. Like, do I have to come next summer and hire the student grass cutters too? Like, probably beneath the council's time. So I think the town should be able to hire their own department area things. I don't think a counselor should say, oh, that guy can cut the grass, that guy can't cut the grass. I think that's what we pay them for. We pay them all. We pay them all enough money that they should be able to do their jobs. I don't think, you know, me helping out on a hiring would be any good.
Counselors. Yeah, I agree. It's up to management.
I'm pretty sure none of us have H R experience.
We're going to start that.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely not a public works expert, but I could imagine that the head of public works would have the most expertise. I know the type of person he'd want and working with the town manager, I think that would be quite sufficient for hiring that position. I kind of agree with what you're saying.
Just to clarify on Gary, yeah, I do have a lot of H R experience. I have experience with equipment, public works. Highways, sewers, all that. I inspected most of the stuff in this town on one dime. And I'm more than qualified to sit on a board to hire a public works employee, although I don't want it.
New point then, I guess.
What is it? So you've clarified, so what is yours?
I'm still, you see a counselor sit on.
I I I like what you said, Steve, about if it was the head of the public works. I'm, I think it would be important because they report directly to us, but in this situation, well, not directly, but like only ones that were moved. I I would like to motion that. Maybe we leave this for later and in this particular situation that we need direct staff to do the hiring, that we don't need a counselor. For this particular, we can reconsider this whole policy in the future.
We we need a person now hiring, right? Yeah, he's done that.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying let, let's like suspend this for this position. Our policy, so let's suspend it and allow them to do the hiring.
I'd like to point out, we're not suspending any policy because the policy doesn't say it has to be on it. It's just direction for the staff.
One counselor, so we would be suspending the requirement for one member of council.
Counselor Will Cox.
Yeah, well, no, I'm. Perfectly happy to follow the bylaw that we have and put a member of council, particularly Harry, because he does have a huge experience. And then, you know, we can later date to look at revising the policy of council.
Um, I. Am. Quite happy to, and sorry, Councilman Hunter, you are correct. It does say one member of council. I am quite happy to suspend this and allow the town manager and the public supervisor. To hire this position. So I don't know. I I would say the general consensus is we're comfortable allowing them to do the hiring for this position. It's a worker, it's not a supervisor and then report back to council on a successful applicant.
I'm just curious how how it would happen if you had a counselor, head of public works and Steve, right? Three P, what do you, and when you got these people that in mind, what do you do? Vote on them or they're just going to have a vote within the three of them and two out of three wins? Is that how it works? I just very, I was going to go.
Normally you raise them.
Well, yeah, but what if one guy doesn't agree? May say, say Harry's on it. He doesn't agree. I don't want, I don't want this guy, but two other people say, oh, we want this guy. He thinks he's the best option. What do you do?
Ultimately, it's the public work supervisor's decision. It's his staff member. Everybody else is there just for a recommendation. Same as with council, it's the general consensus. Now, I'm sure if the town manager got outvoted two to one, that would be a clear sign that he's making the wrong choice.
Hopefully they have a few choices.
Has there been a big turnout yet? Do we know? Your resume.
The the problem with our existing policy is it doesn't say. It just says who is supposed to, who is going to be on the committee. It doesn't say how they're designated. An email went out. Saying that I was going to sit on it and I have over thirty years of H R and payroll experience. That was my job for a lot of years in the city. And there was pushback from two of the counselors on that. So saying that council should choose and that's how this has all come about. So I'm saying, let's leave it to the town manager. If you want a counselor on there, leave it to the town manager to designate who the counselor is.
Recommend.
Well, it's not up to us to approve it, approve the counselor.
Call the policy. The policy's in place.
Yeah, the policy is in place, but it doesn't say we approve them.
A counselor, right? We don't, counselors, council always appoints all board members or all committee members.
This is the hiring policy. It's not a committee.
It's not a committee, that's what I thought.
Hiring committee is a.
They say selection committee.
Selection committee.
The snow shoveler was, there was no council representative on that.
It was myself and the public works superintendent.
As it should be. So for this time, I, my recommendation is to allow the town town manager to designate who the council member is wanting to be.
Yeah.
I know in the past, the mayor always asked who wanted to sit on it and he decided who was going to sit on it. That's how it was done in the past, so. And I don't really want that power. So I think we should leave it up to the town manager and he'll. Make the recommendation of who, what counselor should sit on it. If they're willing.
Can I just clarify that? Because you had said you were okay with suspending it and you're also okay with having the manager. So or can we choose what we're going to?
Yeah, and I'm hearing pushback that if they feel there should still be a counselor on it because that is our hiring policy. So rather than suspend it, we'll follow our hiring policy. The policy doesn't state how the council member is chosen. I'm saying my recommendation would be to allow the town manager to designate who his counselor representative is going to be. And proceed from there.
Yeah, more than fine with me. I, this is a lot of kind of wasted time almost.
Okay.
Micromanaging and confusing and complicated things, like, let's just get her done.
All right. Staff report nine point three. Twenty twenty three oh eight oh one oh three, D Wright, affordable housing. Letter was sent in. And a staff report was done.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Good question. So. From what I understand, they never made any sort of application or paid any sort of fee to the town for any sort of planning, anything. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so I have a request that, because we've had two presentations from two different groups that are well meaning. But in the town that has a planning department, it would never have come to council. They would have paid at the very minimum a fee. And and it would have, that fee is meant to cover the cost of the planning department and these reports. So I just feel that our staff invested time, which is money, in this. And they didn't invest. A few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And so I would just in the future really like them to have even some sort of a preliminary before a staff report is done on a project. That they have to pay a fee to at least cover that administration cost. That's why there are fees. So I'm just more frustrated about the cost when I feel like it should never have gotten there.
I agree.
I agree.
But otherwise it was a good report.
Mr. Wright has been contacting the office to see what council's decisions to move forward. So therefore I will speak to him about the application through the proper channels.
Yes, and further to that is absolutely there's no decision for council to make. There's no decision because council can't make a decision without. It having gone through proper channels and planning and there's so much more even beyond this staff report. That it's not, we can't say anything because we could end up being sued in the end if it can't go through. That's why there's fees and unfortunately costs, but it covers the cost of going through the process.
Yeah. And they have. And I think part of this proposal was to partner with the town.
That was the initial proposal.
And I don't think the town's in any financial position to be partnering with anybody. Because if something happens and one side does not fulfill their obligation, then it's up to the other side to fulfill the whole.
Yeah.
Financially. So. I'm fine with the staff recommendation not to proceed at this time.
Yeah. My, I agree with that as well. We do have some major infrastructure down there and I don't want to see it jeopardized at all. It's all fairly new and it's in good shape. We don't need any issues with it in the future.
I was just going to add to, there's a lot of fences and hazards and things that we have.
Nine point. Oh, yes. Welcome back. Nine point three. I believe council's. Direction is to communicate with Mr. Wright and let him know that we're not proceeding. That was what I seen around the table from the head and I was. So. Counselor Cooper, discussion of cost saving measures and revenue generating ideas.
Yeah. I'm quite concerned with what our accountant said. At the last meeting about, you know, we're on a slippery slope right now with with. With our finances and I think we need to discuss cost saving measures. I have a few ideas, actually sixteen here, but do you want me to just get Steve to circulate the list or do we?
I think that would be the most efficient way to do it.
Okay, I'll just give you the list when it's done here and maybe we'll have discussion at the next meeting on which ones we want. Because some of them would have to require going into closed session.
And I think we talked about in one of our previous meetings. About revenue generating ideas and setting up an ad hoc committee.
That's another, and we at. At the finance committee, we discussed a few options as well. And I think we need to proceed to some of them as well.
Well, I think that we also talked about doing a committee for that in the fall as well. To investigate any more in depth ideas.
Could we have a public outreach and an advertising committee? That could be quite fun. To look at perhaps cost saving measures or ways that we are spending money, like plugging our sewers. And so that committee could come up with some fun ways to say. You know, it costs X amount of dollars. If we had a big sale, we'd have to sell X number of cookies to pay for this. Like, you know, it could be like a, it would, it could be fun to have a committee to think of some outreach because our staff maybe doesn't have time to put together. An advertising outreach, but maybe we could have and ask if a couple of creative town members might want to be part of that. And then we could. Involve the community in cost saving.
And I think that, yeah, there's some ideas that can come before council and we can decide on them, but for the more creative stuff, I think if we set up an ad hoc. In the fall, because that's where finding out the summer, it's hit and miss who's around and who's not.
In the meantime, maybe some counselors should throw some ideas at Steve as well and he can compose a full, a full list, you know, expand on this sixteen. You know, they may have the same idea, they may have different ones.
What's your top one? You got one or two good top ones? They can tell you.
Revenue generating or cost savings?
We want each, the best of each.
Revenue generating. Rent for the theater.
Boy, it's one dollar they pay or something, right?
Cost savings, I got some big ones in here, but. We could reduce the staff, we could acquit, we could do our own garbage collection, we could partner services with Coleman Township.
Definitely. Thanks for discussion.
Yeah, there's some big dollar items in there. I think we can straighten the finances out.
I, in the interim, I think the budget committee's being reconvened. Over the budget because of some of the increases. And that's going to happen after staff is back from holidays. Counselor Will Cox.
I was going to ask about that because I would love to get a budget report on how we're doing financially. Are we on target with our budget? Are we spending, as the accountant was saying, are we still spending more than we're bringing in? I I would love to know where we're at financially as we go through approving all of these wonderful. Filings each month about bill, paying bills and having absolutely no idea.
Well, I know there's been some increases that were unexpected that are going to impact the budget, which is why the budget committee is going to convene. And.
There was a report at our last meeting. Where we're budgeted to actual.
On the auditor's report.
That staff provided.
That was a quarterly report.
Yeah, quarterly report. But no. We're saying about convening, yeah, budget committee to review.
And we're just waiting for staff to come back from holidays and give them a little bit of a breathing space to get caught up after being away. And then dig back into it.
Looking at September for that?
Oh, this month, and I'd like to get the ball rolling on it.
She's back next week, if you know. Yeah, so long as Pat's available, yeah, you know my schedule.
I'm available sometime in early fall. Um, anything else on that? So you'll send your ideas and Steve, he'll circulate them around to council.
I'll email it to you, Steve.
I just want to caution council that not to get into a big discussion over email about the ideas. Let's save them for a meeting. Otherwise it's a meeting online.
I'm just sending that to Steve. I'm not C C and counsel.
It's an easy trap to fall into.
V C C.
Uh, nine point five, mayor's report. The well, I have two things, actually. I'd like to remind our residents that when they're burning, to please be considerate of their neighbors. Watch the direction the wind is going so that you're not smoking out your neighbors. And please watch what you're burning. The greener the wood, the more smoke you're gonna create. And you can quickly smoke out somebody. And the only other thing I would like to mention is the geothermal project that's been delayed. And Counselor Anderson, do you want to speak to that?
Well, he was supposed to be coming up from Guelph on the eighth and visiting Cobalt for the first time, and then we'd be able to meet and chat with him and ask questions. But he's canceled that, because he's got to go to Vancouver before that. So I'm waiting, and he said we'd be able to do the question answer period at our council meeting on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth is our regular meeting.
Yeah, the regular meeting. So what I'm gonna do is, he said he'd be here, so I just want to double check and make sure whether he will be here in person or whether we'll be zooming with him. Other than that.
There was an email that was received today. Today, the family emergency, so I think we may delay it a bit longer.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was guessing from things being postponed and moving up that trip, so, yeah. We'll just let it ride. What I did give Steve, I found the presentation he did for us a few years ago. And I suggested if you just scan it, send it out, just in an email to everyone. It's easy enough to read. It, it just talks about geothermal and how it works. So the the mechanics of of doing geothermal, so it was different from the presentation that I got the last time. So I thought you might want to just take a quick look at it, you know, and just go, go by email instead of printing it out and save paper. The printing's big on, you know, it's a slideshow, so printing's big. So I will let everyone know when we find out, you know, what's being set up for it.
Item ten, close meeting. There is none. Item eleven, business rising from close. There is none. Twelve, adjournment. Draft motion be resolved, but the committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at seven forty three P M. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Wilcox? Counselor Cooper? All in favor? Harry?